Join me in the pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as your honorable Lyndon Jackson trustee gives our invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Look, trustee, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. McCray.
Here. Form is present. Next, we need approval of the agenda.
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the agenda as written. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, we have one citizen comment, and that would be Ms. Manfield.
Yes.
Captain.
Captain.
All good.
It's all good.
Good evening, Honorable Board. How are you today?
Good.
I am here to talk a little bit about our new mass communication system, our Redford Township Alert. I know a lot of you guys have received text messages and phone calls and emails over the last couple of weeks as we've got this system up and running. What is it, you ask? Well, you guys know that we're accustomed to having Nixle, where sometimes you would get missing hit alerts and stuff like that, that the police department's trying to do. Redford Township Alert is like Nixle on steroids. It's great. All the different things that we can do. We have so much more freedom. We can text about road closures. We can text about upcoming events. Some of you got it for the tornado sirens that go off as a reminder that it's not a nuclear war because the number of phone calls that come into 911. People forget about our monthly sirens testing. We like to remind you so we don't have anybody to have a panic attack, right? But some of the, one of the cool things this system does, it does two cool things. A, you can sign up for it so to make sure that you're getting alerts, right? And I've got a couple of these. I'll pass them around. You do a QR code, you can text, you can do all kinds of things. The other thing it does is it lets us reach out to anybody within a geographical zone. So when we have a major problem, all I have to do is highlight an area on my map, hit a button, and bang, it's going to notify everybody, which could be a major concern if we have things like an active shooter, a major hazmat event. So this is a great upgrade to our communications that the township also has like total control over and the ability to reach you guys. Another cool aspect of this is DPS Director Dennis has access to this, and he can notify on things like water main breaks. But guess what? The whole township doesn't need to know when my block gets a water main break because you don't want to be woken up until you're told your water's going off. Remember that geographic thing? I can make it a two-block radius, a three-block radius. So there's lots of cool stuff, and I want to make sure you guys all know how to use it. You can sign up with the QR code. You can actually send a text to 24639. 24639, you would just send the words Redford Township Alert, and it'll take you right to our registration page. The last little thing I want to say about it, I know we've had a couple of bugs trying to get it up and running, and a couple of people had a difficulty registering. One of the things to make it easier to register is once you put in your email, well, first, scroll down to where it says register, not sign in. But when it takes you to your name and page on there where your phone number and your email are, you must click the save button down in the bottom right corner. The platform creators are aware that it is not intuitive, and they're working on a redesign. But until then, I want to make sure that we can reach you with important information. So when you try to register, make sure you scroll all the way down and click the save button, or else it's going to give you a headache. So that's all I've got, unless you guys have questions.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is consent agenda items. Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows. The minutes of the regular meeting of February 13th of 2024, the warrant list of bills as of March 7th in the total amount of $9,038,925.54. The third quarter investment earnings report, October 1st of 2023 to December 31st of 2023. Request for proposals, an RFP of 2024, lawn maintenance of residential and commercial properties. Knights of Columbus, Tootsie Roll sales on Redford Street Corners, March 21st to the 24th of 2024. Reappointment of Catherine Paciano to DEI Commission, term ending 3/12 of 2026. The reappointment of John Buck to the Police and Fire Pension Board, term ending March 31st of 2028. Advertise for bids, replacement, installation, new roof for Marquee and DPS Building. Support.
Who was supported? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Unfinished business number one. Mr. President.
Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board. Last month, the board met for the proposed first reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments, 152N. This was to go through the ordinance that was recommended by the Planning Commission via the Township Board. The board did make some minor changes to the zoning ordinance. That was provided back to you. We also did provide an updated buffer map per the change. And there's a bigger copy for you as well in front of you on the table. And that's where we currently stand. We're looking for comments from you, if there's any changes or any comments.
You have anything to add?
Yeah, Supervisor McCray and members of the board. So what we would look tonight, it would be a motion to approve the zoning ordinance for second reading as amended. And those, again, those amendments were, those items that you discussed, it's part of the first reading at the last meeting.
Questions from the board.
Mr. King. Through the chair.
Yes.
I have a question. I just want to say, due to the, well, last time we looked at this ordinance, I think we eliminated the spacing in the industrial overlay district between uses, where the processors, safety growers, and safety facilities would be located. Due to the explosion in Clinton Township, which might have involved some marijuana activity, chemicals, or what have you, I would be remiss if I didn't bring to the attention of our township and its body that it might be a good deal for us to place some spacing restrictions inside our industrial overlay district between these processor and grower facilities. I understand that I'm only one trustee, but now that we have seen what might happen or could possibly happen, like I said, I would be remiss not to bring this to the public's attention. I yield.
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I have two items if I can while I have the floor. One, I'd like to address Trustee King's concern in saying that in researching that explosion, it was a vape pen factory that was illegally storing butane and another chemical that they were not even allowed to have on the premises. And in doing further research, fires and explosions in grow facilities, it's a very rare occurrence because the, I talked to our attorney about it as well, because that was a concern that was brought up by other trustees too. And he, Attorney Chubb, assured us that the regulations that the state have in place for marijuana facilities are much more stringent than what this individual wasn't even following. So, and while I have the floor, if I may, I'm going to try one more time to ask the board to consider taking a look at the buffers in Section 9, the buffer distance restrictions. And I would ask the board.
What page?
Well, it's under Section 9, buffer distance restrictions. It's going to be Page 4, which is number 3, the 500 feet from religious institutions. I just strongly believe that religion shouldn't play into this decision of legislative decisions regarding retail establishments, that there should be some separation of church and state, and I just don't think religion should factor into the decision at all as to retail establishments, just as it seems to have no effect on liquor stores being directly across the street from churches. So I would make a motion to remove buffer number 3, the 500 feet from religious institutions.
The motion is to remove buffer number 3. Is there a second? Is there a second? After hearing none, the motion fails for lack of support.
I try.
Anybody else on the board? Trustee King, you mentioned something, if you have a particular spot in the ordinance you were addressing, or just the idea, or what?
It's no longer contained in the ordinance. Through the chair, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes.
It's no longer contained in the ordinance. I could make a motion, and I'll make a motion that we institute spacing between processing and grow facilities and, or whatever facilities are located in the industrial overlay, a 250-foot distance buffer between locations. That is the motion.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved to second. So we're talking about 250-foot buffer in the industrial.
Industrial overlay, overlay district.
In the industrial.
To the chair.
Let me write this down. Okay. Treasurer Kavanaugh.
For me, I know that with all of the news media covering all of what happened, I like trustee, yeah, Taylor. Taylor, sorry. Okay, trustee Taylor said as well, as I reached out to Leo, and Leo, can you chime in on what Anthony had said about the regulations, about the BFS, and the, how they coincide and how restrictive and such?
Well, I guess first of all, looking at Section 6, it does talk about 2,500 feet distance between marijuana establishments.
Retail, that's retail only.
Retail, okay.
So you'd have to add a new, like a number seven, it would have to be added.
Yeah, I mean, certainly what Attorney Chubb was referring to is that the state has set up through the state law, various mandates and things that have to be followed that would address the issues of trustee King, and I believe as trustee Taylor has indicated, that what happened in Clinton Township, that they were touring things illegally, doesn't matter how well-written the ordinance is or state law is, if you're not following the law, you're not following the law. So I guess to that extent, I think that those items would be covered under state law in terms of rectifying his concerns.
Mr. Chair.
Well, okay, just hold on. Is anybody else that hasn't had to talk to board members?
That's only for clarification, though.
Okay, clarification, we'll go down to trustee King.
If you could describe what BFS is in conjunction with the state.
Yeah, I don't have that at my fingertips, so I wouldn't be able to, yeah.
Mr. Chair. My concern is not whether it's legal or illegal. I'm trying to say if something does occur and they're close together, everything could blow up. If you've got 250s feet in between, the fire department might be able to get up in between something. That's the way I'm looking.
Okay, other discussion from the board. Okay, there's been a motion to second. Vote, call, vote. Mr. Christie.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
No.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. All right. Got it. All right, any other questions from the board? Any other concerns? They've seen that there are no other questions from the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Articles 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is approved, the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendment, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Article 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended. Vote, bubble.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business number two.
Mr. Supervisor? I apologize, we're trying to shuffle paperwork up here together.
I understand.
So, it'll be the same thing as the last meeting, the board, at the last meeting of February 13th. The Township Board met for a first reading on the establishments ordinance to authorize the operation and provide regulations, which would be a new ordinance for Redford Township. They were, we did provide the ordinance for you. There was a couple of small, little changes in regards to, there was a change, a small change on the hours to allow from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Additionally, it was noted that renewal process are not recommended this time through RPE. So there was only one small change on the ordinance for the establishments after the first reading.
That was on Page 6 in Redford.
11.
On the red one. Questions from the board? Questions from the board? Hearing no questions from the board, whether it's a pleasure of the board.
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Establishments Ordinance, authorize the operation and provide regulations ordinance as amended. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the second reading of the Marijuana Establishments Ordinance, authorization, authorize the operation and provide regulations ordinance as amended. Any other discussion? Vote, call, vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
No.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. All right. Got it. All right, any other questions from the board? Any other concerns? They've seen that there are no other questions from the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Articles 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended.
Vote, bubble.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
No.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. All right. Got it. All right, any other questions from the board? Any other concerns? They've seen that there are no other questions from the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Articles 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is approved, the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendment, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Article 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended. Vote, bubble.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. All right. Got it. All right, any other questions from the board? Any other concerns? They've seen that there are no other questions from the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendments, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Articles 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is approved, the second reading of the Marijuana Zoning Ordinance Amendment, 152N, permitted uses for certain limited marijuana establishments, Article 10, 12, 13, and 14 as amended. Vote, bubble.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business number two.
Mr. Supervisor? I apologize, we're trying to shuffle paperwork up here together.
I understand.
So, it'll be the same thing as the last meeting, the board, at the last meeting of February 13th. The Township Board met for a first reading on the establishments ordinance to authorize the operation and provide regulations, which would be a new ordinance for Redford Township. They were, we did provide the ordinance for you. There was a couple of small, little changes in regards to, there was a change, a small change on the hours to allow from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Additionally, it was noted that renewal process are not recommending this time through RPE. So there was only one small change on the ordinance for the establishments after the first reading.
That was on Page 6 in Redford.
11.
On the red one. Questions from the board? Questions from the board? Hearing no questions from the board, whether it's a pleasure of the board.
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the second reading of the Marijuana Establishments Ordinance, authorize the operation and provide regulations ordinance as amended. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the second reading of the Marijuana Establishments Ordinance, authorization, authorize the operation and provide regulations ordinance as amended. Any other discussion? Vote, call, vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the, Ms. Jackson, might as well stay up here and keep going, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Also, Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board, this is also the second reading of the proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 50, Article 3, Section 15 and 51 for mobile food service. There were, there was two items that we were to bring in front of you today, and there was also one that I wanted to bring in, wanted to do that one first. After going through this, it was brought to my attention, and I did provide it to you in front of you. There was one section I wanted to add in regards to the, I apologize, I'm trying to find this stuff here, to add in a placement on Section 5053, location states, to add just one small section, placement of a food service truck or cart should not negatively impact traffic circulation, maneuvering lanes, blocked driveways, or prohibit public safety vehicles access to the property. That would just be added to Section 5053 as number 14. That was just something that we kind of threw it afterwards and just thought it was missing in just a, just a little bit of a public safety and a placement of it on the property. So I did, I did place that in front of you if you were, if you were able, if you wanted to add that into this ordinance. The other part that the board did ask me to look into at the last meeting, there were two pieces, on Page 3, ordinance. It is Section 5052, Section 3, on Page 3, about the township shall issue no more than X amount of active food service truck or cart licenses for any calendar year. We did look into it, looked into a handful of different communities locally. It looked like there was a handful that allowed, I should say, there was one community that stated that can only have 10 active mobile food truck licenses for any calendar year. So a lot of them didn't, didn't put a limit to it per se. Some, obviously, we do have it in here, that only one location, if you can only have more than six days in a calendar year, it was already in the ordinance. The board didn't want to know. Some of them did not have how many active they just were enlisted. And we checked, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 8 communities. They just aren't listed that way. So it is something that, there was trouble that one did say that there was going to be only 10 licenses, and the other one didn't say 12. Or we choose none. So it was totally out of the board, what you would want to do for this one section.
If I could add in, Supervisor, the board, I think it would be a good idea to have a limit. This is the first go with this ordinance. You can always modify it from year to year. I think it's easier to have a, have a limit and fluctuate than it is to have no limit and try to install a limit. So I would recommend either the 10 or 12 number that Director Dennis had indicated was found in another ordinance.
Discussion from the board.
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, I'm curious, if we limit the number of permits per year, assuming that these permits are only good for one calendar year for each truck, is it just going to be a first come, first served? So if a truck loses permit and it comes time for him to renew, if there's no permits available, he's just kind of out of luck at that point?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And it's based on, is it a calendar year, or is it based on when they got their permit?
Calendar.
Calendar year. So it'll roll over at the end of the year, every year? So you'll get a mad rush January 1st for people wanting their food truck permits, basically? That's the idea, roughly? Okay, okay. Do you have a number that you're suggesting? Suggestion?
Suggestion?
If I had a phone and coffee.
Okay. I would say 12, maximum. Up to you, you guys ask. So I would say 12 minutes. 12, I don't know, that's what we saw, the one was 12, the other was 10. But the thing is, you have to look at it for a calendar year. It's, you know, it is a calendar year, so we're allowing only six days per year. So up to the board. So I would say, if it's first year and Attorney Clark is correct, that maybe you start the first year, see how it goes. And then if you think we need more, we can come back to the board at the end of the year and say, hey, it was great, and then we can change it, increase it, see how it goes. We're already in March.
And for me, I think 12 is a good number, because we want to see how this goes, because we need to make sure we protect our businesses that are brick and mortar paying taxes. And if, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to put a hardship on them, so if we go to 12 to start and see how it works, then we can decide to go more if we need to or want to. But I think that any more than 12 is not good, you know, for our local businesses.
To the chair, I just, I have.
Okay, Ms. Kennedy, I think has some. No, you're good? Okay, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, is like how the permit works? So you get a permit for the whole year, does that mean that you can, how many uses does that permit allow throughout the year? Do they still have to have a permit to go, like, could you sit on your permit for a year and never go out with your truck?
You're going to have to do it again. Well, yeah, yeah.
You basically could.
I use it.
one section.
If I could add in Supervisor and Board, I think it would be a good idea to have a limit. This is the first go with this ordinance. You can always modify it from year to year. I think it's easier to have a limit and fluctuate than it is to have no limit and try to install a limit. So I would recommend either the 10 or 12 number that Director Dennis had indicated was found in another ordinance.
Discussion from the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, I'm curious, if we limit the number of permits per year, assuming that these permits are only good for one calendar year for each truck, is it just going to be a first come, first served? So if a truck loses permit and comes time for him to renew, if there's no permits available, he's just kind of out of luck at that point?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And it's based on, is it a calendar year, or is it based on when they got their permit?
Calendar.
Calendar year. So it'll roll over at the end of the year, every year. So you'll get an ad rush January 1st for people wanting their food truck permits, basically. That's the idea, roughly. Okay, okay. Do you have a number that you're suggesting? Suggestion?
Suggestion?
Expert, hold the coffee.
Okay.
I would say 12, maximum. Up to you. You guys ask. So I would say 12 minutes. 12 minutes. That's what we saw the one was 12, the other was 10. But the thing is, you have to look at it for a calendar year. It's, you know, it is a calendar year. So we're allowing only six days per year. So up to the board. So I would say, if in first year, and Attorney Clark is correct that maybe you start the first year, see how it goes. And then if you think we need more, we can come back to the board at the end of the year and say, hey, it was great. And then we can change it, increase it, see how it goes. We're already in March.
And for me, I think 12 is a good number, because we want to see how this goes, because we need to make sure we protect our businesses that are brick and mortar paying taxes. And if, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to put a hardship on them. So if we go to 12 to start and see how it works, then we can decide to go more if we need to or want to. But I think that any more than 12 is not good, you know, for our local businesses.
To the Chair, I just, I have a-
Okay, okay, Kennedy, I think has some.
No.
No, you're good?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, is like, how the permit works? So you get a permit for the whole year. Does that mean that you can, how many uses does that permit allow throughout the year? Do they still have to have a permit to go, like, could you sit on your permit for a year and never go out with your truck?
You're gonna have to do it again. Well, yeah, yeah.
You basically could.
I use it.
Yeah. Right. So you could have a permit and not use it, or you can have a permit and use it how many times throughout the year?
Well, you can only do it six days in a calendar year at, no more than six days a calendar year permitted are located on the parcel.
So basically, each permit's going to allow a truck to be out there six times a year?
At one site, yes.
At one site. So 12 would mean, do the math, that's how many we would have out there. How many days of that calendar year?
At one property, yes.
Oh, one property?
Yes.
So that property can't have any more.
Got it.
Let's say, for example, you have a gas station in Maine and Dulford, I don't want to choose out of business, and they can only have it six times one year, maybe once per month over six months. And that's it. They're done. They can't have another company come in. It's that, that property has six calendar years, six days that year only.
But that same food truck could then be parked at Claude Allison during a softball game if they had a permit or that same food truck or-
Another place, another business.
They could go, then they could go down to Joy and Beach and use it and go to that place if they want.
So they're not limited on the use. The premises is limited.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Within 300 feet from a brick and mortar restaurant.
Okay, thank you. That's much clearer in my head. Do we need a motion to add 50-53 location before we-
We can, we can do it all at once. We can, you know, do the 50, the 50-53 location and put a number on number three.
Oh, and then just vote to change the whole thing?
Yes.
I had one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Can a food truck apply for more than one permit? What's it, one per business?
Should be one, one per business.
What if that business has three trucks?
They get one.
Yeah.
They get one.
They get one, yeah.
Okay.
It's for, it's an annual license for that business.
Other questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
What do you got? 12?
Yeah.
I think 12 is good.
What's your pleasure?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the second reading, Proposed Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 50, Article 3, Section 50-51, Mobile Food Truck, Mobile Food Service, as amended. I was going to say, I think I have to list.
Okay, it would be-
Section 50-53.
50-52, number 3, is where we're going to change it to 12. And then 50-53 would be the location.
Add a new Section 14.
That's what I'm saying. Do we have a second on what we just talked about?
Second.
Okay. So the motion is, here with, so we did it right, to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 3, Section 50-51, Mobile Food Truck Service, to amend 50-52, number 3, with the number 12 instead of the X's, and to add in under 50-53, location, that would be number 14.
Sounds good.
That sound right, Mr. Clark?
As long as the clerk has that language, I'll try to copy your clerk.
Yep. Okay. All right. Let's get a roll call vote on this one.
Taking a vote now?
Yes, please, roll call.
Okay. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes, sir. The last, are here for unfinished business, is the second reading for Proposed Ordinance Amendment for Chapter 22, Article 11, for inspection of rental dwellings. We had no changes after the first reading. This was just adding a three paragraph section regarding tenant evictions, about having a dumpster placed at an eviction order instead of all of the contents from inside the building being placed at the curb. It's starting to become a problem with us, where the contents, the personal belongings, being placed at the curb and sit there for a handful of days. So we did work with the court, worked with the building department, and both, Mr. Swicki and Mr. Corbin and I have gone through this, shared it with the Township and also with Mr. Clark, and there were just three little sections that were added. That's it.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee, Treasurer Kavanaugh.
It's okay. We're all tongue-tongued. Okay, I'm, the second reading, Proposed Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 22, Article 11, Inspection Rental Dwellings.
Support.
And moved and supported. So the motion is approved, the second reading, Proposed Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 22, Article 11, Inspection Rental Dwellings. Roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Director Stokes, I believe you're up.
Good evening, Honorable Board. So the first item that I have on the agenda is the appointment of the Senior Citizens and Veterans Coordinator. As everyone is aware, Ms. Thompson has retired, a long-term employee here with Redford Township. We interviewed Mr. Clough, I want to say, almost three weeks ago now, and it was a unanimous recommendation from our panel to bring this to you for an appointment of Christopher Clough to the, as the Senior and Veterans Coordinator for Redford Township. So he has over 14 years experience in both seniors and recreation. He had a phenomenal interview, and is also here as well. So if you have any questions, feel free.
Can I move and say it?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, please, yes.
Hello, how y'all doing today?
Good.
Good. Good. Hi, my name is Christopher Clough. As Theresa mentioned, I am a recreation professional from Metro Detroit, grew up in Dearborn. I have been doing this for more than 15 years. Half of that with seniors and veterans is my specialty. I've served the communities of Detroit, Ann Arbor. I was the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Lake Village, and I'm coming from the private side for the past two years and happy to be coming back to local government. So I'm excited for the opportunity. I think it's a good fit, and can't wait to get started.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, yes. So you've met the person. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the appointment, Senior Citizen and Veterans Coordinator, Christopher Clough, Grade 3, Step 2.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. The motion is to approve the appointment of Senior Citizen and Veterans Coordinator, Christopher Clough, Grade 3, Step 2. Any discussion? Roll call. Vote, please.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Congratulations. Congratulations, yes. Welcome, yes. Director Stokes?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the contract extension between Hawthorne Management Company and the Charter Township of Redford for an additional three years, from April 1st, 2024, through March 31st, 2027, with the adjustment. So I did provide you, and I apologize, it was the last minute, they had asked us to change the way that the payment would be created. So that September payment is $70,000. I just want to make sure there's an extra number in there.
Always.
So the only changes in, from the last contract to this current contract is going to be under the term stating that April 24th, the first day of April 24th, and then into the 31st of 2027. And then if you go back to page 11, just the compensation schedule, and then they are looking to change, they will receive 76.5% of the first $990,000 now instead of $890,000. Myself, Supervisor McCray, and Finance Director Bonnerick have all met with them. We felt comfortable with this increase, mainly due to the cost of inflation over the past several years and being able to adjust for that. So it's about 11% increase. They have also included in their current rates some adjustments for that, as well with their food and beverage prices as well. So we feel comfortable with this, and I'm just looking for any questions at this time, or an approval to approve the contract.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board? Irina, what is the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the contact, contract extension between Hawthorne Management Company LLC and the Charter Township of Redford for three years, from April 1st, 2024, through March 31st, 2027.
Support.
Okay, well, we have to make an adjustment because of, with the amended schedule. So I, so-
The amended schedule that we were given tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
And how does that look in the motion, as amended?
With the amended schedule?
There we go.
Okay.
Yes, I accept your change to the motion.
Okay. So the motion is to accept the contract extension between Hawthorne Management Company LLC and the Redford, and the Charter Township of Redford for three years, from April 1st, 2024, through March 31st, 2027, with the amended payment schedule. Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Well, you're still on.
All right. Next one on the agenda is the contract amendment in the amount of $69,500. And this would be for HED. As we have come to the board prior, due to the remediation of the poor site soil and changing over to the rammed aggregate foundation installation, they had to extend their schedule in order to be able to oversee that design and then additional contingencies with some of the add alternates. So this is the amendment to that contract that we stated would be coming before the board.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee King?
Director Stokes, this isn't directly related to this, but it's kind of.
Okay.
I remember in the past, I've talked about how large the parking lot is for the Wellness Center. Now, has there been any discussions of having electrical vehicle charging stations there?
We have had some original discussions on that. To my knowledge, I don't think that I was, I know we're going to be, I believe, running-
We're gonna, it's gonna be-
The actual electric pole for it, yes.
Yes. The plumbing's gonna be there, but there hasn't been, you know, it's-
Yeah. So we'll have it, just in case in the future we decide to-
Right.
Move in that direction. So we'll have that out to the specific sites. They created a couple of different areas for that. So yes, we have been speaking about it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions from the board? Hearing another question. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the Recreation and Wellness Center HED Contract Amendment in the amount of $69,500 to cover the cost of design for the board-approved changes.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the Recreation and Wellness Center HED Contract Amendment in the amount of $69,500 to cover the cost of design for board-approved changes. Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. I think you're up there.
And then the final one I have is the Recreation and Wellness Center Award to G2 Consulting Group as a material testing consultant in the amount not to exceed $44,860, inclusive of all reimbursable expenses. So as we talked about, as we're moving around the soil on this site, we want to make sure that there's somebody on there that's able to be the testing consultant for that project. In this one, we went out to bid about three weeks ago. So this was the recommendation. In your packet, you have the full bidding as well, and this was the recommendation, which was lowest qualifying.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Was this an additional item, or was it already budgeted in the original?
All of this stuff was original budgeted in there. It just depends on which pot it went to. So because we found out about the soil and the rammed aggregates and everything like that, this was suggested that we have them on-site to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? I just, before we go in further, I just want to say that this team has done an excellent job and continues to do an excellent job working for the Recreation Wellness Center to make sure everything happens in a timely manner and scheduled properly. And I can't be more proud of them. And Theresa has kind of taken the lead on making sure all these meetings get posted and does those things. So I want to say, I appreciate you-
Thank you.
For doing that. So now that I have my speech, we can move along. So what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the Recreation and Wellness Center Award to G2 Consulting Group as the material testing consultant in the amount not to exceed $44,860, inclusive of all reimbursable expenses.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the Recreation and Wellness Center Award to G2 Consulting Group as the material testing consultant in the amount not to exceed the amount of $44,860, inclusive of all reimbursement expenses. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, she burns, you're up.
Good evening, Honorable Board. This evening, I'm asking for your approval for the purchase and installation of the Motorola MC7500E system-integrated dispatch consoles. The current communication dispatch system that we currently have is antiquated, is approximately 24 to 25 years old in technology, at the point now where Motorola, the components are considered a legacy, which they no longer provide the parts and do not have the parts available to replace if it breaks. So with that going forward, it's very important, obviously, that we have our dispatch communication center up and running at most fit as possible. So this MC7500E is the current upgraded system which most communities around us have, and it's actually the only one, the system is proved by and utilized by the Michigan Public Safety Communication Systems. A couple of little things that this system does provide that our old system did not are preps, and our in-car radios have little buttons that would be emergency buttons that officers can hit when they wouldn't have to verbalize anything. It can either be covert or if they're in trouble without alerting anyone. So they could just hit that system, and the dispatch would get that in a GPS from where they're located. This will also be extended to the fire department as well, as you may know that we also dispatch for the fire department. One of the great features, it creates a lot of talk groups, and one of the most important things is with other communities around us, we can create these talk groups and put all these agencies around us preloaded in there. So say we have an active shooter, we can actually go to this one channel, and all our surrounding agencies will automatically be on that channel. So we, that was a lot of communication that came stummed away from 9/11, when they had issues with interdepartment agencies communicating with each other. So that solves that problem. Now, this, the purchase of this system, it's going to be a lengthy process. It comes with a project manager. If we initiate, if the board does approve this, the purchase installation, it's going to go through about spring of 2025, when it's fully integrated and we're fully using the system. With that being said, the price of it is $626,666, which does include a $70,454 discount, part of my deals as a governmental discount. This will be paid for by E911 funds and SAD funds throughout a three-year process, which we spoke with Mr. Bonnerick and how that would be approved.
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I know this is last minute. Were you able to contact the Senator's office at any point about some of the money that may be available for dispatch? I know that the Senator for our district said that she was able to get money for Farmington, Farmington Hills, for their dispatch. Is there any talk about that? And if there is money available that you had not reached out to or were able to bring in, how would that work with the budget as far as?
I believe Captain Mansfield had discussions with, she could probably speak-
Okay.
Better on that.
Sorry about that. I did actually have some communications. We are working with part of the Western Wayne Consortium that we are dealing with, and especially their communication system, Jordan. And she's telling us that there is likely going to be some money available in the next couple of years for this dispatch system. One of the things that's important with this new system is it's encryption capable, and most likely the state is going to require us to be encrypted within the next several years, though they won't tell us when. We intend to utilize that money if it becomes available to buy new prep radios, our portables for our, that are on our- That are on our person as well as our vehicles, because that's going to be a large sum of money. So we are hoping to be able to take that money that you're referring to, to be able to apply it to our vehicles and our portables. I assure you, I will find a way to spend that money. I know that's what you were asking.
Just so people know that I mentioned what was on the agenda, and she stated that she got a lot of money for other communities, specifically for dispatch and communication, and she said there's more money to be had that we could probably get our hands on.
I'll reach out.
Okay. How would that work, Adam? Quickly.
Good evening. I was hoping to get through this meeting without having to say anything, so sorry for ruining that for all of you.
Oh, no.
But I just wanted to, regarding that, if we're able to receive those funds, we will certainly work that within. I know as Captain Mansfield said from her conversations with Senator Kavanaugh, I mean, there's all those requests are coming through, and she had already received some funding for us. But we certainly would be able to reallocate the funds somewhere else. And the other reason that I came up is I just wanted to make sure the board knew that the first portion of this payment was actually in the fiscal year '24 budget, the budget year that's about to end, which would be the component that comes out of the E911 funds. The rest of it will come out of the SAD over the next two years, and that was all in the recommended budget that I presented last month. So this is all right within what we were expecting, just so you guys know. So it is all in there.
Okay. All right, thank you for the clarification on that list. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
To the chair.
Okay. Trustee Taylor?
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
This new system compatible with the radios that you guys are carrying, or are we going to have to replace car radios and personal radios as well?
They are compatible. At this time, we still want to upgrade because the... They said the shelf life is usually five to seven years. That's what... So we've had these for quite a few years. They are compatible with what we have now, but that's when Captain Mansfield said we were going to upgrade apart from this dispatch console.
The radios that we have now were purchased in 2019. By the time that our full dispatch console system goes in, and then we're hoping to get our hands on the other prep or the other money to apply towards our new preps and our new mobiles, it'll be right on schedule to what we were planning on doing. And that's kind of where we're at. We've got a plan in place, we just got to get it moving.
And what about...
That's why this is coming to you as two separate proposals. When we talked about it at the budget, we originally looked at it as one overarching, like, $800,000 proposal. We're splitting it into two, hoping we can get that additional money for the preps and the radios down the road.
Okay. And my other question, chief or captain, downtime? Any... When you transfer such a... When you're moving over to such a huge council, is installation training, what are we looking at?
We should be in good shape. If you guys have been in our dispatch center, you know that we have two councils. We have one for the police side and one for the fire. Having said that, both sides are capable of doing both jobs. So they'll do one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And mostly what they'll do is they'll build it, they'll have it ready to go, flip a switch. Build it, ready to go, flip a switch.
Okay, so no anticipated downtime for a 911 system?
Not anticipate.
Awesome.
Trustee Jackson?
Chief, how confident are you that the current system is going to last through the installation of the new?
The current system? Well, we do have... Ironically, we have some components that exist within our radio room that we've... When we have service, they utilize any power system from old system that we have laying there to replace the system. I think we're pretty confident that we can get through the year of the system here. We do have contract services that come out and do radio maintenance as needed, and so far we've been pretty good, but we want to obviously get this started as soon as possible so we can alleviate any potential problems.
Do you know how soon after the contract is awarded that Motorola will get started?
I believe it's going to be April. It's the April.
They've already had project managers on-site. They've got everything going. They are waiting for your approval and your autograph.
Yeah.
And they will hit a go button. There's a lot of work that needs to be done with the towers and whatnot that they will be doing while they're waiting for the equipment to be delivered to us, right? Because that'll take a while.
So the 12 months also includes delivery time?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, we expect to be up and running...
Fully utilizing the system in a year.
By Aprilish of next year.
Ouch.
I say ish.
We know. We know. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh?
All right. I move to approve the purchase and installation of the MC 7500E, $627,666, paid from the E911 funds over the next three years. Support.
Shane, it also has to include the SAD funds?
Yeah.
Oh!
Okay.
So if we can insort it, that'd be great.
Over the next three years, including the SAD funds?
Yes.
Paid from E911 and SAD. Oh, and SAD.
So the motion is to purchase and installation of the MC 7500E, $627,666, paid from the 911 funds and SAD funds over the next three years.
Support.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, the next two items are related to two documents related to recruitment in the Township's Fire Department. You know, five, six, eight years ago, recruitment wasn't as big of an issue and now is a major issue, not only for this township, but for all the communities in southwest, southeast Michigan. The board may recall, some time ago, you approved a lateral transfer agreement that permitted employees to come into the fire department if they had three years in Detroit. They came into the township at the step-three level. That was also for the police department. So this is another go-round of a way to encourage fully certified firefighters and paramedics slash paramedics with both licenses, who would be hired by the township, would be paid a signing bonus of $10,000 in two installments. Now, that payment does not come without some strings attached. In order for that... Those dollars to be kept, the entire $10,000, the employee would have to remain employed with the township for four years. So it's not like someone's going to come in and get a check and then disappear. And so we did negotiate this letter of agreement with the IFF. I know the president is here, and again, we worked hard to get this together. So I'm here to answer any questions. The second part of this will be the actual agreement with the firefighter to sign off on it, and I can address that when that agenda item comes up.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee King?
John, in reading this, am I to assume that they have to already be a firefighter, paramedic? Or I know with the other program, we're hiring one or the other and putting them through the academy?
Yeah, you have to have both certifications.
So for this bonus, you have to have both certifications?
Yes. The other matter you're referring to is where we agreed to put somebody through the academy if they were just a paramedic and didn't have the firefighting.
So they wouldn't qualify for both?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And also, just in... For full disclosure, the reason that it's dated November 1st is that we do have an individual currently employed who meets the qualifications, who would have received the $10,000 bonus. That's why it says anybody hired after November 1st to '23. So just want the board to be fully aware of that. That's something that we discussed and agreed to, tentatively subject to the board approval.
Other questions from the board? Here now, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King?
I'd like to move that we approve the letter of agreement with IFF Local 1206 Regarding Recruitment Incentive.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Motion is to approve the LOA with IAFF Local 1206 Regarding Recruitment Incentive. No other questions? Roll call vote. Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
So item number seven is a counterpart to the document you just agreed. So not only do we have an agreement with the union in terms of the payment of the $10,000 under what circumstances and the obligation to repay, we also want to have a separate contract with each individual who receives the dollars. That way then we have a legally enforceable document we can take in the district or circuit court to hopefully never happens, but in the event that somebody decides that they don't want to repay us the money, we have a document, we have a contract with that person to enforce, to recover those sums in the event that they leave before the four-year term. So I'm here to answer any questions. Otherwise, the motion would be to approve the Redford Township Fire Department Fire Recruitment Incentive Repayment Agreement.
Questions from the board? Here now, question? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor?
I move that we approve the Redford Township Firefighter Recruitment Incentive Repayment Agreement.
Support.
Moving and supported. Motion is to approve the LOA of the IAFF Local 1206 Regarding Recruitment Incentive Repayment Agreement.
Actually, Mr. Supervisor, the motion is exactly what Trustee Taylor indicated. It was listed as an LOA. It's not actually an LOA.
Okay. What do we call it?
It's the...
Trustee Taylor?
It's approval of the Redford Township Fire Department Firefighter Recruitment Incentive Repayment Agreement. It's a mouthful.
Okay, so we're going to say it's the slowly fragrant rate discount, or give it to me so I can keep it. How's that? Yeah, how about that? All right off the top? Okay. So the motion is to approve the Redford Township Fire Department Firefighter Recruitment Incentive Repayment Agreement.
Directly.
Roll call vote. Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis?
Mr. Supervisor, honorable board, make this quick. We are looking to purchase a 2010 Freightliner Utilimaster Stepman in the City of Allen Park. We have an existing... It's a 2015 F-550 truck that is on its last legs. We currently have 40,000 miles on our truck. We call it Truck Six, but probably somewhere around 60,000 idle miles on it, as it sits there, the time it adds up. The City of Allen Park, I want to give big thanks to Sean Sinkbeal and Tom Rowland for networking. Sean was speaking with another community about something. Allen Park just bought a brand-new work van, as we call it, our work truck, and is selling their current 2010. We are looking in the next budget to be purchasing also a brand-new one, but we have two of these, and the other one's starting to fade out as well. So we are looking to hopefully... The City of Allen Park was willing to sell this 18-foot Stepman to us for $37,000. It's a great deal. Our staff has already been out there, checked it out, and we are excited to hopefully be able to purchase this vehicle, put it in use. We're hoping to get it within the next three days. City of Allen Park's been holding it for us. And it only has 14,000 miles on it. So it's a great deal. It's already equipped as all the... And then we can put all of our stuff in it and then sell our Truck Six for scrap, basically.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson?
Mike, what does one of these vehicles cost you?
Probably $200,000 to $250,000. And we will be hopefully putting that in the next year's budget, because it's taking anywhere between 18 and 24 months to get it ordered, and that's why we're doing this right now. Ford is really... All the manufacturers are really behind.
Good deal.
Yeah, yes.
To the chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh?
How many miles approximately does this truck have?
14,000.
Oh, I didn't see it, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Here now, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor?
I move that we approve the purchase of the 2010 Freightliner MT-55 Utilimaster Stepman for the Water Department for $37,000, paid from GL 592-54200-977021, capital improvement equipment vehicles.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to approve the purchase of the 2010 Freightliner MT-55 Ultimaster Stepman for the Water Department for $37,000, paid from GL 592-54200-977021, capital improvement equipment vehicles. Roll call vote. Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Night.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Mr. Supervisor, honorable members of the board, good evening. Tonight, we're requesting your approval of the Downtown Development Authority bid recommendation for the Landscape Maintenance Contract for fiscal year 2024, 2025. The maintenance contract includes the five-mile and Beach Daily Streetscape Town Hall Complex, Marquee and the Rose Garden. At a special meeting on March 6, 2024, the Downtown Development Authority Board approved the Landscape Maintenance Contractor, Sentman's LLC, in the bid amount of $29,170.50. The funds to pay for this activity will come from the DDA tax increment financing. In summary, it is a DDA recommendation, the Landscape Maintenance Contract, you order to Sentman's LLC, in the amount of $29,170.50, and approve the Economic Development Director to sign the approved contract on behalf of the township and contingent on the Director of Central Operations' approval of the contract. We humbly ask for your approval.
Questions from the board? So we don't have the contract in hand, correct?
That is correct.
And is the contract going to be reviewed by the attorney as well, to make sure that it's right?
The contract was originally approved for the township, and we're using the form that the attorney's originally prepared. So it's a form, Redford Township form, that's already been approved by the contractor, the attorney. If you wish, we can have the attorney review it again.
Well, usually we have attorneys look at contracts and make sure they're correct.
That would be fine.
So that's fine if, you know, we need to make sure the attorney reviews the contract, and we can have... Who else did you say you want to review it?
The Director of Central Operations.
To the chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh? Treasury Kavanaugh.
Can you remind me, previously, what was the amount of the maintenance before this contract?
Last year's?
Yeah.
Last year's was $29,395. This year, $29,170, our difference of $325 less.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we award the landscape maintenance contract to Sentman's LLC in the amount of $29,170 from the DDA tax increment financing, upon approval from the Director of Central Operations and the Redford Township Attorney, and also allowing Director Jablonsky to sign and implement the contract. Support.
And we have moved and supported, so the motion is to award landscape maintenance control contract to Sentman's LLC for $29,170 from the DDA tax increment finance, financing, TIF, and be reviewed by the attorney, Township Attorney and Director of Central Operations, and to authorize Director Jablonsky to sign on behalf of the township for this contract. Vote, call, vote. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yeah.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McRae.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I know.
Okay. Mr. Clark.
A busy night for you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Honorable board, tonight for you is a five-year contract with North Redford Towing and Transportation. This process started last summer. Interim chief, a competitive bid process. And so after some issues, we finally got the contract worked out. The contract was presented to the board. Although it is a five-year deal, the township can get out of this deal with just 30 days' notice, whether or without cause. The contract's been fully vetted by legal, by the police department. And it's my understanding that, that North Redford has been towing in the township for over 20 years. So we obviously have a track record with them that we're satisfied with. Trustee Taylor did ask a question about the fees. The fee schedule comes out annually from the tow company, and those fees are paid directly by the person, by the owner of the vehicle that's towed. The township doesn't pay or collect dollars on behalf of Redford. So with that answered, to answer any questions, also, the police chief is here. Any questions we can answer? Otherwise, we would recommend you approve of the contract as presented.
Questions from the board? Trustee Jackson.
Just one question. The fees are paid by the people whose cars get towed. Was there any kind of review to see if those rates were competitive with other towing companies in the area?
Yeah, I believe that was the original RFPs, the proposals that were sent, that that was part of the whole process. With all the towing companies that went out, they gave fee sheets with everyone, so that was part of the selection process.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Seeing no, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the contract with North Redford, North Redford Towing, March 2024 through March 2029.
Support.
Support from Trustee Taylor. Pardon me?
I was asking if we needed dates in there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll include the dates once approved. So it'll be today's date.
So the motion is to, to approve the contract for Redford Towing, March 2024 through March 2029. Vote, call, vote, please. Ms. Kennedy.
Yeah.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. McRae.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. You want to?
Treasury Kavanaugh. The Treasury, Treasury Kavanaugh. Go ahead. Don't do it anyway.
Lily, just say Lily.
Yeah. Okay. Treasury Kavanaugh wants to talk to you all.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you for both the interns, that chief, that chief, and legal for tightening this thing up and getting it done. Thank you. Thanks. Bye, John.
Okay. Okay. Now, what's from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Christie.
I have a couple of observations on our recent presidential primary that was held on February 27th. First of all, from an administrative standpoint, my staff did a great job. The DPS did a great job delivering the equipment. Tina has become a go-to person here in Wayne County regarding early voting. I want to thank our hosts, the facilities that hosted the voting. We had a celebrity election inspector, our state senator, Mary Kavanaugh, and I got good reports on her. But we can't ignore the dismal turnout that we had. It was just, it's, it's sickening to think about the effort that we went through to put on that election and, and look at the turnout that we had. I, with the turnout that bad, you can't blame the voters. Something's wrong. And part of it is that it didn't matter, you know, the votes don't count, it's already decided, and the unpopularity of the candidates, that had, those are two obvious factors. But we have to look at, at the trends going forward. Early voting did not provide that big boost in, in participation. However, we're still going to need early voting because institutions are more and more reluctant to host voting. So we need to take the pressure off of those same-day vote, voting places. And the, the other trend that we see in, in that election is that people prefer mail-in voting, right? Almost two to one. And we look at some western states such as Washington, Oregon, Colorado, and there may be others, that that's the only way they do it. They have, it's just mail-in. There's no in-person voting. So we need to keep, keep that in mind. But here, from an administration vote standpoint, was a very good, very successful one.
Other announcements from the board? I only have one, that the 24, 2024 State of the Township address will be on March 21st, 11:30. Lunch, we'll be a program and lunch, lunch and, program will start at noon. This will be hosted by Redford Union High School. The cost is $25 per ticket. Please check, call the chamber to purchase tickets online or directly. So that'll be on March 21st, 11:30. State of the Township starts at noon. Anything else? Hearing no other?
Sharon the Green.
Sharon the Green? Oh, yes. It takes Lily to remind you I'm Irish. Everybody have a pleasant St. Patrick's Day. Be safe, be responsible. Slonch to all. Yeah, I know. See, this is.
I know.
So seeing no other business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Very good.